Called order the meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman for November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. If you'll join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for your blessings that you bless us with, blessings yet to come. We ask that you give us our mercy and your grace. We ask that you bless all the first responders, all our military people and their families. And we thank you again for this year, for your Thanksgiving. We ask that all the families are blessed and that they appreciate everything that they have. For we ask these things in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Feden, ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're taking roll call.
Okay, oh. Roll call. Patrick?
Patrick, you here?
Here.
Okay, Patrick is on the phone with us tonight. Pete?
I'm here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike Brown?
Here.
Timmy?
Here.
Angie? Angie is on the phone with us tonight also. You there? Yeah, okay, she is with us. Beginning to wonder. Uh, thank you, Angie. And then Bernie?
Present.
Okay. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight. Announcements, presentations, proclamations, do we have any? Here none. Amendment to the municipal docket, do we have any?
Mayor, I'd like to request the board consider one amendment, number six, under new business to address citizens group concerning soliciting information from the public.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
The motion second. Any further discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Make sure, can y'all hear me out there? I just want to make sure y'all hear my voice. Oh. So I'm gonna list, I'm gonna list that one as Mr. Simpson. Okay. Uh, do we have any other amendments? Okay, here none. Approve the minutes of the mayor and board of Alderman for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three and November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three executive session.
Move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Planning and Development Commission, uh, November ninth, regular. Motion and second discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Thank you.
Number one, under new business, the certification of re-subdivision, Johnson Road?
Yes.
I think we have the letters from everybody. That's it. That is in my ward. Uh, I'd like to ask our council about what has been done here is eight acres divided into two four-acre plots. And they're asking for a variance on road frontage on both four acres. And maybe Donald can help me also on this. If we grant this for a single-family dwelling, if they decide to come back in and put a subdivision, they'll have to come back through the planning commission and this board for another variance. Am I correct, Donald?
Yes, but I, correct me if I'm wrong. I can't, I don't think you can do a variance on a variance. You, you see where, where I'm going with that?
My question is, can we approve this with the stipulation it is only to be used for single, a single-family dwelling?
And, and it's, I'm not certain because as I'm sitting here now, how it is zoned. Are they, are they rezoning and getting a conditional use permit for that subdivision?
No, no, no.
They're just asking for variance.
It's R one. It's all R one.
It's all R one already. Hold on just a minute. This gentleman here, I don't, hold on just one second, boss. Uh, so council, what I understand that it was two individuals that has bought eight acres. They're splitting it into four acre plots. Am I correct?
Correct.
Is it gonna be used just for a single family?
Actually, yes. We have twenty-six acres of which we selling off eight acres. We dividing it into two four-acre parcels. We only have fifty-foot frontage, road frontage, so we asking, we ask for the variance of twenty-five feet each. They are single-family residents. It's an R one zoning. The buyers do not want, um, to divide it or subdivide it or anything. They just want those four acre parcels for a home.
Okay, so, and I still go back to down the road. I understand.
That is permitted. And if they were gonna, if they were gonna change that plat, even the fifty-foot fronts, which is awfully small.
Well, it's two twenty-five foot and it should be two thirty-five.
If, if they're going to do, if there was any change in any of that, they'd have to come back and reapply for new variance and go through planning commission and this board.
Okay.
If anything changes.
So.
Also, yeah, this is the letter from Tim. That's not included in this, what we've been submitted to.
Right, but Tim has sent them a letter on the turnaround. You're talking about if it's over a hundred and fifty feet, correct, chief? Right, if it's over a hundred and fifty feet, they have to, even though it's a single-family dwelling, they're gonna have to have a turnaround for a fire truck. This goes sustain the weight of the fire truck. Okay.
But have they got that in diagram here?
Well, they haven't submitted any plans, I don't think yet. And I think that would have to come to you and you would make sure of that, correct?
Okay.
I'm good with it. If, I mean, I ju, I just wanted to clarify that. I, make a motion that we approve it as is?
We got a motion. Second, we just in discussion yet. If there's no, if there's no more discussion, I could call.
I have, I have discussion, but on a different matter that, that I may have to make an alternative motion. Regarding, uh, just some clarification on the short-term rentals. Couple of them are, uh, marked N A on the taxes. Uh, and I'd like to just hold, uh, hold those out just so I can get some clarification, uh, before the next meeting.
Your motion, your subsidy motion would be to approve with the, with tabling these?
Yes.
Which ones?
Which ones?
You talking about all of them?
No.
No.
George, did you have that?
That was, yeah, I'm trying to, uh, I think it's on page, when I looked at it, uh, I would say look at.
I lost the page.
I've got it here. If y'all just bear with me for a minute.
No, there's one that's marked N A for the.
Yeah, there's one that's marked N A for taxes. And I think we need to have clarification. I agree with Donald.
If it's, we were discussing this, whether it's a, how, how it can be a nonprofit or you, you see where I'm going with this, how it's a. I apologize. I didn't write down the name.
I think it's, uh, item eight, and I don't know the page name. I, I thought I had marked that, y'all. I apologize. Uh.
I'm thumbing through here now.
I'll find it in just a minute, y'all. Yeah, it's on, on page seventy of the packet there.
Mississippi Sales Tax, N A.
Yeah, property managers phone, uh, Mississippi Sales Tax ID number not out before, N A. That was on page seventy.
I know, that's the one on Pyma Road, it looks like, or that's what, who they have.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the one you wanna?
I don't think we need clarification.
I just want clarification on that. If the rest of the board's fine with it, I'm okay. But I just wanna make sure that I'm not reading it incorrectly.
Item eight.
Yeah, I mean, we, and, and I'll even go as far as I can approve the minutes as is with clarification on that. You know, and that way we can, we can meet with Mike, uh, you know, talk with him and then get it clarified. And once we have good explanation on that, then we can, you know, move forward. So I guess that would be my alternative motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh. Approve, uh, yeah, approved docket of claims number one-one-two-one-two-three, motion second discussion. Got a motion and have second, second. Do we have any discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished businesses, uh, Inter Bulkhead and Southern Quay. Uh, we have somebody from Andecor here. Don't have anybody. Uh, we've got down lower, uh, on section eleven, six D. There's, I would like for us to bring that down or bring engineering six D back up to discuss this. Uh, cause there's some information went in that that we've talked about. Uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try, since we don't have anybody here from Andecor, to explain, you know. We, we have talked about this and how when we asked for the funds, we had an estimate from engineering on what it would cost for us to do these, these walls, being the southern, the southeastern wall that we're done test piles on, and we moving forward with that as quick as we can get them made, uh, to move forward and do that. Well, the price on the eastern wall and the southern quay and the remaining part of the southern wall there has more than doubled based on what we had asked for funding, what, two years ago and three years ago? Four years ago sometime? Uh, so due to inflation, it's gone up. We had talked about the, uh, the financing that would, you know, we've got tidlin's funds and we've also got, uh, some GRPC, GUF, uh, the, the BP money.
GCRF.
GCRF. And, and, you know, we can't take some of the funds that's been given to us through the legislation by far certain parts of the harbor uh, without going back to the legislation, legislators and asking them to do that. Now, I've done some research with Andecor and a particular, a particular, uh, municipal or county agency have been granted funds of like up to five million dollars to do a project. And then they sent back a, two years later to say, can we do this project with this money? And they ended up saying, yeah, you could do it, but we're only giving you two and a half million instead of five million. And I don't want us to get caught in a situation where we're gonna ask to take other funds that's been designated for portion of the harbor and us think we could take and use them in another portion and lose funding. And have to go back and beg for more. So what I'm gonna ask is if, if we could, if I could get a motion and a second to table this until we have, until we have someone from Andecor here to really give us all the information we need.
So move.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this?
I think David had something he wanted to share.
I, I don't need to. You guys at the last meeting had asked me to put together info about budget and cost and estimate. And I got that. I didn't have it in time for the agenda. I apologize, but I did have it in front of you tonight.
And I would like to tie that all in with what we're, cause this, this is, this funding sheet that you provided this afternoon is part of the reason we need to make sure we're doing things right.
Right.
Understood.
So we're not, this, this is just on, uh, number one of unfinished business. We're not coming down here to number, uh, six D. Yes, we are. We're gonna table it also.
I want to, I want to table that. Anything that has anything to do with that, I want to table it. And I've lost my agenda sheet and all my stuff. I got it. Yeah, I, uh, under unfinished business, uh, uh, five, I mean, nine, one, Inter Bulkhead and Southern Quay, and also under department business, eleven, six.
Engineering, under engineering.
I mean, engineering.
Yeah, that's the ward and the contract. So we want to table it also. Or go wait till we come down to table it.
I think, I think we, we could wait and table it later or we could take it right now. So let's wait and, let's wait and we get down there and then we'll table it. So we, if, you know, we have discussion on that, we could discuss that. So, so I've got a motion and a second to table, uh, nine, unfinished business, uh, number one. Yeah, any more discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
What was it? Was Angie?
Aye, she's, she's, she's good.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Angie. All right, uh, motion carries. Don't bear with me, man. I got everything all mixed up here now. Uh, tree removal, five oh one North Hill Avenue. We wanna, I would, uh, ask to take that off.
Motion to remove.
Yeah, and we, what we have done, uh, the homeowner had said they would remove the tree. And then we said, well, why don't we go out and eliminate through, uh, public works this problem? And they went out and cut the limb that was hanging low that was causing trucks to hit it. And now we have a twelve, over twelve-foot clearance there, which should be suffice to say that, you know, anything should not hit that now. So that's been taken care of.
We have a motion.
In a second. A motion and a second to, to remove, to remove that from the agenda.
No action taken.
Correct.
To not table it, remove it from agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, city hall generator repair, Mike. Uh, let's get a motion and a second of discussion on this.
So move. Second.
And got a motion and a second. Do we have, uh, Mike, can you, we've got the estimate, estimate here from Preston Bond Painting and you have reached out to him.
I have.
Uh, and it's a price of forty-three hundred dollars to take care of this. And this will, this will protect our generator fuel tank from rusting and, uh, causing us to have probably some large problems if we did that. So. Uh, and we discussed, this was a discussion from last, uh, board meeting. So everybody up here is familiar with that. Uh, any, uh, any, any discussion on this, guys? Y'all got any input or anything? All right, here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have amendment to, uh, public trust tidlin', no.
Cemetery.
Four, number four. I'm sorry.
No, and, and, uh, you did me a favor because I'm gonna ask to table that. Um, I'm still working on the fees.
This was to set a work session.
Oh.
Work session.
Well, I was gonna bring that as well. So that's up to you guys if we wanna set that.
Get your information, then we'll.
Yeah, that's, I guess, I don't wanna do a work session and have everybody show up if we don't have all the information yet. I'd like the board to see the information first and then determine if that's sufficient or if we wanna do a work session.
All right, let's, uh.
Yes, that's my motion.
Second.
And we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Oh, I need to turn my hearing aids up.
There's a delay.
Yeah. All right, next we have, uh, amend public trust tidlin's lease. Uh, I've talked to, uh, council today and I would like, I asked him if we could table this until he is prepared to answer us.
That or I'm prepared to make a motion, no action taken until our attorney brings back. That way it doesn't sit on our.
Okay, all right. That's your motion. We have a second. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, tri-party agreement, Alderman Fraser.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me get a motion and a second for discussion and we can move forward. We got a motion?
Motion.
And we got a second.
A second, and I'd like to start the discussion on this matter. Um, it's no, uh, thank you, Donald. It's no, uh, secret that, uh, where I personally stand with this, uh, representing the citizens that are here, the citizens that are viewing, uh, online. It's no secret that sixty to ninety days ago, when this board was faced with, uh, coming up with next year's budget, uh, we had to raise taxes on these people at, at a rate of four and a half mils. And, uh, and we had to do so in order to meet our expenditures, to pay our departments, uh, to do all the city business that we needed to do. Um, now we are considering, uh, a tax abatement and leaving dollars on the table. Some of the red flags I've reiterated and I'm gonna reiter, reiterate again. This permit from this developer was taken out on May second, two thousand and twenty-three. As of Friday afternoon, based on my research, it expired eleven-two-twenty-three. Uh, this developer threw thirty-four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars at the city and hadn't put a shovel in the ground yet. If they can afford to do that, why is there a tax abatement needed? Initial talks with the developer, uh, it was initially stated three to five million. Based on the valuation on this permit, it's at two million. Quite a significant difference. Uh, I'm told that there are plans down at, at the zoning office regarding, uh, the development. However, there's been some talk about a two-story building, a three-story building. Do we even know what we're considering granting, uh, an, an abatement on? I, I, I just don't see, uh, where this, this, the approach to this matter has been done without a certain element of deceit. I will say this, the three biggest players on Jeff Davis Avenue, Keith Starita, whose wife is a minority, minority owner of that business, Pam Sanders, uh, female minority, uh, business owner of Bacchus Liquor and One Stop Auto Parts, as well as Robert Bass, owner of Harborview Cafe. Three of the most successful businesses in this town do not have the benefit of a tax abatement. We have a new facility going in, a fuel station, convenience store, market on the corner of Johnson Road and Beetline Road. Do we advertise to them that they're eligible for a tax abatement? Uh, do we, do we publicize that? I wanna reiterate that several meetings ago, State Representative Richard Bennett stood right there at that podium. And when he was asked about, uh, a suggest on how we move forward as a city, he told us at that point in time, always keep in mind that you're spending the money from the citizens and keep what the citizens' concerns are, uh, in mind. When I was elected two and a half years ago, I, I intended to do that. And I'm gonna be the voice tonight who states that. I'll also represent to you that in the resolution that we adopted on the ninth of February of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, about five paragraphs down in section two, it says, "The city of Long Beach will establish the redevelopment program in specific areas and identify grant rates on a project-by-project basis." Based on my memory, this board has not undertaken that role and we have not designated a certain area. So I would ask council, are we even legally, uh, within our rights to go forward and do that? Lastly, I'll suggest to you this. Per million dollars of revenue based on retail sales, uh, at a seven percent rate, you're looking at twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Out of that amount of money, should this abatement, uh, be granted, the developer would get returned ten thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand annually, do the math. It's, it's, to me, it's ludicrous after raising taxes on you people. Um, so with that, I will. With that, I will yield to the board.
Well, Mr. Magui, you kinda jumped the gun because I didn't even get to present it. So, uh, I'll kinda go through your concerns and then we can kinda go with that. So my first statement would be, number one, you did vote for that, uh, ordinance. Number two, did you or did you not approve or did this, and let me rephrase that. Let me not come at you. I apologize.
Oh, come at me. I, I love you.
We're good. We're good. So did this board, the, the question is, did this board approve or not funds for cruising the coast in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars? To answer the question, seven-oh, yes. Did the board approve an eighty-five hundred dollar check to, uh, Jeeping the Coast? Seven-oh, yes. And the way I look at that is that's an upfront tax abatement. And the way I look at that is, that's an upfront tax abatement. The city is spending eighty-five hundred dollars in hopes to, that this group would bring in the tax revenue to make up that money. I don't see the difference here, other than, this is not an upfront tax abatement. This is after the city receives their money back from the state, and it's not the full seven percent. It's eighteen and a half of that.
Of the seven percent.
So, when you say that, this is something that is permanently here, that we are not out any money. My next question is, how much tax, uh, sales tax have we generated on that property since Hurricane Katrina? The answer is zero. So, point being is, we've taken these chances, and we have taken these chances, hoping that we would get return on our money. And have we? Uh, I think we've done pretty well with Jeepin', and I would say Cruisin's pretty successful when you have groups that want to participate and turn this into a stop and ask the money, uh, the city to spend more money for this to come in. So, tell me how development comes from that, other than people showing that. We've discussed this, and what that brings in is new households. But new households don't generate the tax revenue that a city, that a business would. So, there's, there's my point there. We talk about development. Since Hurricane Katrina, we've had four, five, at most, on Jeff Davis? This was an option for the city to look at redevelopment, the same way that property tax was a way to incentivize redevelopment. And this is the reason why I'm proposing the five-year sales tax abatement for the property at, uh, three one seven Jeff Davis Avenue for the developer of Rivley Properties LLC. And that's my motion.
Discussion, we still got discussion.
Sure.
Can I talk?
Hold on, let me get a second on that. Be the junkie, junkie. All right, we got a motion and a second, now we can continue with.
Okay, so, I'm gonna kind of echo a little bit of what Pete said also. Uh, my problem is, we do, we have not set up a area for redevelopment. My other problem is, this is a redevelopment program. After Hurricane Katrina, that property was leveled. It was one piece of property. A title company redeveloped that property, and now they split it to another piece of property. That is not redevelopment. That's a brand-new piece of property. So, I have a problem with that, is that legal?
It, it is legal, and it's legal to proceed, as, as Alderman Magui asked. You certainly can go forward with this without the necessity of creating a redevelopment plan as wa, as was envisioned. The city always should, and I have witnessed the, the efforts to try to forecast in the future the best and most productive and efficient way to stimulate economic growth and smart development, so to speak, within the city. We're gonna talk about that some more in a little bit. But to not allow it and to not consider tax abatements to this business or any business, for that matter, uh, without the existence of that would, would, is counterproductive to the city's mission, and it's not required legally that you establish a program before considering individual, uh, request.
So.
Okay.
So, with that.
I'm still talking.
And I'll, I'll, uh, let's address that question, and then let's kind of go from there. You talk about that, and, and I'll commend you for studying up, whether it be you or, or information passed on.
No, wasn't that information passed on?
So.
Be studying it.
With that is, when we, the city identified a sales tax abatement, we did set up an area. So, I, excuse me, property tax, let me, let me correct myself.
Property tax was done in two thousand and eleven.
Yep, but, but you did have to set up an area.
Right.
So, being that it's a tax abatement, wouldn't this still fall under the same areas?
I, I don't know.
Well.
So, let me ask you this. And I, and, and so we are, we are go have, and, and I know Pete brought this up, a, it's not just a service station, this is gonna be a big project at the corner of Johnson Road and Beetline. Is he in the area? Because this place is go bringing a lot of sales tax, 'cause that's what they thrive on, sales tax. I mean, 'cause it's, if you don't believe me, look at the one, it's up there on Highway fifty-three, right by the railroad tracks by Old Highway forty-nine. That's the same development that's coming in. So, but are they gonna be in the area? We don't know.
Can, Donald, can I say?
Hang on one second, uh, hang on one second.
So, that's, that's my, my thing. We don't know if this part's in the area and this part's not, where do we go from there?
They can ask.
Well, but I think you, your question was directed back to kind of my comment. Until you create such a development, you're right, you don't know. But that does not prevent you from considering individual requests. Uh, because there's nothing for it to sit in or out of at this point.
Okay, one other question, and I go back to Pete. Can we give a tax abatement with an expired building permit?
So, what I do is, I ask Mike Gunlock, do you, how often do you run into permits that have expired and renew them? Uh, for example, uh, I have one offhand that I can, uh, talk about right now. Two one eight West Avenue. How long did that permit go on without having to be renewed? Three years, four years?
Don't take that long.
So.
I think it's been on there about two years. But I have, but I have charged that man some inspection fees.
Okay, inspection fees.
And what's the code say?
Sir?
What's the code say? Six, a permit is good for six months. That's in the building code, correct? Okay.
Well, but I'm sure.
If I, if I could ask him a question, simply because I don't have it in, in front of me. Um, I'm familiar with the county ordinance, which allows for six months and then automatically extends up to three more times as long as some action has been taken. I, I can't tell you the exact wording of Long Beach's. Is there an, is there an extension of hours after a period of time? If some progress is made towards a development?
I can extend it.
Okay.
With discussion with the contractor.
Okay.
So, there, there's your, your answer is, it's being done, so there's a precedent set right now.
So, another thing, you talked about Cruisin' the Coast and Jeepin' the Coast. Cruisin' the Coast is twenty-six years. We haven't had, uh, to raise taxes. We haven't even discussed the money we go give to Cruisin' the Coast this year because we had to raise taxes. And I do not think it's fair for us to give a sales tax abatement when we have to raise taxes. That's just my opinion.
Fair enough.
I don't need to.
You know, Patrick would like to say something. Patrick, you can go now.
Yeah, as far as like the area, I think we should open the sales tax abatements to every business in Long Beach, especially in the areas like we have blighted buildings. I've been, we need to develop a, a tax payment from buildings. It's literally what cities around the country do, all over the coast. I've seen, they're, they're, like, these are things to promote growth that they're designed for. Small businesses fail within the first three to five years, like, just to help business start. Not this one, I'm talking in broad, broad terms of every business. Uh, this might, especially right now with interest rates, people, what a business needs, uh, to meet bank requirements, or whatever it may be. But I think that we mentioned, as you mentioned earlier, they all probably have, have tax abatements. A business that wants to start, and, you know, should come and present perfect tax abatements. I think that's a smart way to prove, and maybe fix some of these blighted properties that we have meetings about weekly, uh, get them to these small businesses. And I don't, and I think the property, the threshold is too high. The two or three million dollars is just, a small business deserves the help they can get, just like a, a larger business. So, you know, we can't say that Long Beach is not gonna participate, and we've had on the books since after Katrina. Uh, we let businesses around, and people who want to start businesses know we're open for business as a city. We can't keep fighting everything that comes in. I think people are gonna stop coming, and it's already happened. So, we've, uh, be active, and not just, it's not about, uh, the treaty, you know, it's the other stuff, but this isn't about, this is a, not about that. This is about tax abatements for small businesses, uh, and that's it. And it's happening around the coast. They're continuing, the Bay, all these places are giving tax abatements. We're not growing, we've gotta do something.
I have a comment.
Got it.
Um, I, I agree with what, um, Mike and, uh, Pete said, that with the taxes that's been raised and all, we, we're letting these people get out of paying taxes and all. And I feel like it's gonna be set up as a, um, recurrence that you're okay at now, you'll have to do it every, every time that a business comes in. And it's not fair to the other businesses that come in and, and didn't have this chance and opportunity to be there. That's my take.
I disagree there. We, we have, we haven't on this board, but in the past, other developments on Jeff Davis ain't on Highway ninety, have taken advantage of tax abatements.
Yeah, one second.
And from my point of view, we sit on this board and we put this together.
Closer than Mike.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And we try to come up with creative ideas to bring businesses in, and I think this is an example that is working. And we need to bring as many businesses in as we can.
So, if we do this tax abatement, and then they come back for a property tax abatement, now, we, they're not gonna pay any sales tax for five years, and they're not gonna pay any property tax from one to seven years. This just does not make sense to me.
Is that, that's basically hypothetical, 'cause that's.
Come on.
We've already turned that down.
Yeah.
And if nothing comes there, that's what Long Beach has to realize.
You're not giving up anything if nothing comes there.
And.
Like, we have to get these businesses in. Like, that, I, I don't understand, it seems way more simple.
Yeah. Now, Patrick's the one that voted against the tax increase, correct? And now he's wanting to give taxes away.
Yes, I voted against it because I don't think that we made the cut that we should have made.
Can I make one more comment, Mayor?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to add, um, this property was bought by this developer as an investment property. Um, and, and the comment has been made by Patrick and others, where we'll just have one more vacant lot on Jeff Davis. I assure you, having that vacant lot hurts the developer worse than it hurts the city. Um, Donald, I, I, I want to say this to you personally. I respect you, um, and, uh, and I think that you have, uh, the best interests of the city uh, in mind almost every time. I just, just think in this particular case, I have to agree to disagree. Uh, lastly, I would say, uh, I don't know where this vote will go tonight, but, uh, if this goes, uh, in favor of granting the tax abatement, uh, I would just remind, uh, the mayor, based on emails, texts, uh, phone calls that I've got, uh, Mr. Mayor, that you do have the ability to veto, uh, which will require a five-vote, um, uh, override. So, um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm just relaying all the, the comments, the details, the frustration that I've been faced with for the last two weeks. And that's, I'll, I'll rest with that.
Let me say this, I don't need directions on what to do with a veto.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your, your thoughts and your concerns, and when you become mayor, you can sit here and make that decision. Don't, don't, I, don't do that to me.
No, no disrespect intended. Uh, quite frankly, I was asked to make that remark.
So.
Well, when, when whoever asked you to make that.
One more thing, Donald.
Wait, 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 wait.
Uh, when they get elected mayor, they can make that decision. I've got one year, seven months, and about eleven days.
One second.
And the next mayor can make those decisions.
Uh, a veto is not something you take lightly. And, uh, you know, it's, it's.
So, can I address something real quick?
I'm.
Just so we can stay on track. One second, Patrick. So, and, and so, let me talk about clarity and people reaching out to you. Uh, the mayor, and he can attest to this, the mayor was contacted, and he asked me to answer some questions. I offered to take my time and meet and even bring in the representative from SMPDD. Uh, he, when we reached out to him, he had already received three or four phone calls from different people, uh, questioning this, uh, this program. Um, we had the meeting set, and George, you can, uh, tell me if I'm right or wrong. We had the meeting set, and it was canceled.
Right.
So, um, so I, I throw that offer out to you. Uh, Patrick, if you'd like to speak, y, you may.
Just with the sales tax abatement, you know, you're, you know, we're gonna pay all the, long back to a third party. In terms of the agreement between the city and the property, aren't met and don't receive the tax abatement. So, I mean, it, it, the risk isn't there, but if they don't do their, then they won't receive the abatement.
Okay.
We have any more discussion about this?
I call for the vote.
All right, all those in favor signify.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do a roll call on this, so we'll know? Pete, I'm at Patrick.
Patrick, they're calling for your vote.
Pete?
No.
Donald?
Aye.
Mikey?
No.
Timmy?
Aye.
Angie? Have we lost her?
Can you hear me? Angie.
Ask her if she's on mute.
Are you on mute?
All right, I'm gonna move forward then. Bernie?
No.
That was the count, three, three. Three, three? When I make this vote, I want this full board here to make this vote. I'm gonna vote no until we can have a full board here, and I would really like to have a full board participate in doing the business of the city. So, I'll vote no at this time, and I'll also request that this be put on the agenda to be re-discussed at the next meeting.
Can I say something about the next meeting? I mean, we are in the holidays, and we go run into the same problem. I hate to say that. Do you want to do it to the next meeting, or?
I would, uh, my motion would be to do it. I skipped a trip to Orlando to be here this evening.
I'm, I'm, came in out of town to be here.
But this is what we signed up for when we, you know, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all, and, and, and forget about anybody who's out here.
And I'm gonna echo exactly what Pete.
Uh, that's exactly what I was gonna say. We're gonna be good when we walk out of this door, regardless.
This is probably our most, uh.
Contentious.
Yeah, between this board, and when we walk out of here, we're still gonna be a board as a whole.
Sure we are.
Uh, I have different opinions sometimes, and y'all like them, sometimes you don't. Sometimes the public likes it, sometimes the public don't, so we're good.
Yes, sir. So.
So, this motion fails.
This motion fails, and, uh, uh, we will go down, and when I get to the mayor's business, I intend to ask for, to have this put back on the next agenda. And I would strongly encourage, I mean, strongly encourage that all aldermen are in ten, in attendance. Uh, we've lost Angie during discussion, and I think, you know, Patrick, I couldn't hear what he was saying, and I want everybody here, I've turned my hearing aids up full blast to hear what he was saying, and I still couldn't hear. And I think it's only fair to us and the citizens that we have a full board here to hear what's being discussed, so. All right, motion fails. We'll move on to the next thing. Uh, sidewalk ordinance review, concrete pricing, uh, motion second discussion.
Motion.
Second discussion. I believe, Mayor, it was you that brought this up last meeting.
Right.
Revisiting our ordinance, and I thought we got prices, and the price has gone up significantly. We're looking at starting price, six dollars a square foot, going all the way up to nine dollars per square foot. At the cheapest, that's eighteen hundred dollars. I believe our current ordinance is nine hundred dollars.
Nine something, nine seventy-five.
Nine seventy-five.
Nine seventy-five.
Nine seventy-five, and what is it now?
Six dollars a square foot, that'd be eighteen hundred dollars. And that's the cheapest. And that's the cheapest price I could find. And the price range all the way up to nine dollars a square foot, which would be twenty-seven hundred dollars for seventy-five-foot of wall.
Thank you. So, I, oh, I've got a motion and second to discuss this.
Yes.
So, do I have a substitute motion to move forward with doing anything, or we're gonna leave it like this?
I think we should discuss as a board which route we wanna go. I feel like everybody, I'm not gonna speak for anyone, but I feel like we need to raise the in lieu of payment. We just need to come up with the right amount. Anybody has any suggestions?
If we had to go out today...
These are the prices.
And do a sidewalk...
That's the price.
To fill in a seventy-five-foot section, it's gonna cost us eight hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred. We pay a nine seventy-five, we're allowing.
We're allowing them to pay.
Yes.
So, so...
Y'all, y'all figure that out.
My, my suggestion would be meet in the middle at seven fifty a square foot, and I'd put it at twenty-two fifty in lieu of payment.
And I understand that the public might think that we can get the Public Works Department to do this, but you gotta remember, this takes two or three people, correct, Mike? A day or two, materials. And I mean, I don't see where that would make a significant change in the amount. So, I'm gonna have to side with, uh, Tim over here that we do need to raise it. Uh, I also spoke with a contractor yesterday, and he's saying, actually, he was leaning towards three thousand for a four-foot sidewalk, four inches, which is three and a half inches thick by seventy-five feet. He's paying three thousand dollars to have it done. He's a home builder. And when he does that, he pays about three thousand dollars. So...
There's your answer.
Uh...
Can I...
Yes.
Can I make a alternative motion? And, and Timmy, see if you agree with this. See if we agree with this. I say we, we increase the, the amount. But with that increase, we put it to be reviewed at every budget year when we go out to bid on asphalt, uh, different items, so that the city stays up to date with...
That means that the price may go down, and we don't wanna have our permits too high.
Exactly. So, so, or I'll ask you to amend your motion with that, to look at it on an annual basis with our budget.
I will make that motion.
Motion include, does that motion include the price we're gonna charge starting tonight?
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two fifty.
Why are we gonna charge twenty-two fifty when it costs three thousand?
Well, that, that was the price you got.
Yeah, that's him. I mean, we're, I mean, this is...
Which one? You saying three thousand, Tim saying twenty-two hundred?
Do you wanna get some, do we want to not even bring, I'm sorry, bring this up? And get some written quotes from the contractors where the board will have something to look at?
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I also want to not issue any permits, not issue any permits for variances for sidewalks until we get that in front of us.
Can you get, can you get, uh, so the substitute motion is we're gonna table this until
We get written.
We get written, some written quotes.
Second.
And no variances for sidewalks until we get that.
Yes, correct.
You got that, Mike?
Yep.
Right.
All right, that's the motion and second. We have any more discussion?
Uh, just one, George. Uh, planning and zoning would have to be notified, correct, of, of your, your, your last request?
Writing that down.
Michael will take care of that for Pete. That's good. Yeah. All right, has, Patrick got anything?
Yes. Go ahead.
So, I, I disagree with, like, saying nobody can do a variance. If I'm building a house in a area that has no sidewalks and there's, we know where there's probably gonna be sidewalks or not, like, I, I don't know that we should make the homeowner put in a sidewalk. That's kinda changing an ordinance without having public hearings or anything like that. I mean, I don't know how we can just change an ordinance and say, no, you can't do a variance.
Yeah, I, can I interrupt you? Uh, we're, we're, we're not changing the ordinance. What we're changing is the, just the price for the variance.
Right. But to say that nobody can get a variance until we, that's the part I'm talking about, to say that we're not gonna give anybody a variance until...
Two weeks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it in two weeks.
This is, um, what they're saying is this will be done at the next meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. But if I come in tomorrow, I can still get a variance.
You just have to wait two weeks for your variance on sidewalk.
Well, you can apply for your variance because you have to go through the planning, planning and zoning.
Right. All right.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. And, all right, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Uh, new business. We've got, uh, special event app, City of Long Beach Easter egg hunt, and the motion and second.
Same move.
And motion and second. Is there any discussion on this? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have another special event application. It's a fee waiver request for Kind Hearts Christmas on the Green. And motion and second discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Oh, I got a question. Where, where's this group from?
Socia. That's their address.
Where?
Socia.
I'm not against it, but, uh, just wanna know where they're from.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, banner placement request, First Baptist Church, uh...
Motion.
Second.
The motion and second, it's discussion.
Uh, all I do wanna make is a statement commending First Baptist Church for being very responsible when they do, uh, ask to put up signs. Um, you can see every time that they're taken down in a timely fashion, so I do wanna commend the church for that, and I encourage them to keep setting the example.
Okay. Very, very good to hear, uh, to let our citizens know that they're, that, you know, they're following what everybody should.
And it's being seen.
Right. Yeah. All right, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, rec center fee waiver request, American Legion Community Blood Drive. And on our, uh, before I ask for the, for first and second discussion, you'll note on your, your flyer in the packet that it's got February sixth, well, it's actually February the thirteenth is when this request is filed. So I, motion and second discussion?
Same move. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, we have Robert and Susie Sapp regarding, regarding obtaining city right of way. Uh, if y'all wanna come up, uh, I'm gonna need to get a motion and second for discussion.
Same move. Second.
All right.
I have some paperwork I'd like to pass out to the board, explain some of the maps and...
Billy, you got that? Thank you.
Yeah, Billy, make sure we...
I just got a call, though.
Yeah, it's city property, and I'm gonna get David and, uh, Mike to talk about this. I don't know if it's drainage or if it's a water pipe or what it is.
I don't think we need to...
If it's, you know, active water.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure that, yeah, thank you. Susie, I was just fixing to ask if you'd get that down there, uh, so we could hear, Robert, and I appreciate that. Uh, do, before Robert and Susie, I'm gonna try to save us some time here. Does anybody on the board have any questions or thoughts or discussions about this?
My, my problem is, and we're going through this right now on this fire department station, our property, that we're having to get appraisals for all this, and we're putting it out as a silent, uh, bid, correct? Uh, for, for this on Fourth Street.
Right.
So, can we do what they're asking here?
I, I don't know since...
The, the, uh, I, I have not had a chance to discuss this with Mr. and, uh, Mrs. Sapp, but the, I, I think the clerk whom I did discuss with may have conveyed to him the, the way to do this, if it's the board's pleasure to vacate, and that's what they're actually asking to do, to have the city vacate this right of way, which has not been developed, uh, or that portion of it, uh, is, is for them to file a petition in the court to vacate the, the, right of way on the, uh, on the plat. And if it's the board's will, we would, I, I could on behalf of the city then not contest the petition to vacate, enter an agreed order vacating it, and that's, that's how you do it with, you don't sell it, you don't put it out for bid. They vacate it off the plat.
And it has to go through the courts.
They do, and that's an easy procedure, which I can explain some more in detail to them without giving them legal advice. But the way to do that is to, that, that, we have one pending now.
I was just wanting to make sure we was in our rights to...
Um, I understand there may be, and we may wanna get, uh, the Public Works to get involved, that there may be some drainage, uh, on that particular easement that may be affected. And I'm not sure whether or not Public Works may want to maintain some type of easement for the purposes of maintaining drainage or not. But I think David Ball, uh, I mean, I think Joe and, and David could look at that and we, give us a decision.
And I, I've, I'll go along with that, and I've reached out to, uh, David, and I've got some information here. I'll, I can't understand where, whether it's drainage or if it's water service that goes on, on this. Pass these down.
I'm gonna change them quickly.
I think there's two there. Yeah, send those down there. And this'll be one for you. Have, have you got a copy of this, David, or?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I looked at it today. I'm fairly familiar with it.
Okay.
What, what, what y'all are looking at is a, is a sheet from the, uh, construction drawings for the water and sewer replacement after Hurricane Katrina. And, and sadly, I don't, I don't know that we would've thought to do this, but that, that survey that we did, the topo survey that we did for that project, really only kinda got the right of way. So that culvert, you can see it crosses from the west to the east. I think it comes from west to east across the Marcy right of way. And I don't think either Public Works or me really knows where it's coming from or where it's going, but it is an existing drainage culvert.
We don't know what it's draining or where it's going to.
As of right now, I don't think any of us know where it goes, what it's coming from.
All right. Uh, based on that, I would say, and not to shut y'all down or stop you from talking, I think we need to get all that information before us, cause it, it's, it's very pertinent information that will drive us to where we need to be. If there's no drainage, it may be covered in the ground, but it may not be draining anything. And, and you know, and if it's a water line, we need to know if it's an act, active water line.
Yes, sir.
If it's going to nothing and we don't need it there, if it can be removed. Y'all, you understand what I'm trying to do here, and, and I don't wanna waste y'all's time tonight. And you're more than welcome to speak, Robert, if you want to. Uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm not gonna, trying to shut y'all down, but I think until we have this information, and you could go ahead and move forward and go ahead and file through the court system, but I think it would be best, I don't want you wasting any money. I think we need to be able to give you an answer upfront.
Yes, sir.
You know, that, yes, we, we'll, we wouldn't, you know, approve it for you. Yes, you know, just go ahead and move forward. Uh, it's a split between your lot and the next owner's lot. It's not, you don't get the full thing, as you know. And, uh, so, you know, and it's up to y'all what y'all wanna do. So if you wanna speak, you're more than welcome to.
I just think it's important that we do know what's going on underneath the ground there.
Get, get the mic over. We...
I, I think it's real important that, as a homeowner, that it's important that we know too about drainage.
Right.
Because, uh, you know, obviously, we don't want it to flood. So I appreciate Long Beach having, uh, to do that for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we table until we get further information on what's under the ground.
Table it to the ne, table it to the next meeting? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, we got a motion and second to table this till the next meeting. So Robert and Susie, we'll have it on the next meeting. We'll, we should have the information by the end of next week.
Sure. Thank you.
So we'll be prepared. Okay? Thank y'all for coming in. I appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, number six. Did I call for the vote on all this, on all that, or I just moved forward?
You did.
I got first and second.
You did not call for the vote yet.
Before we move on, who's gonna determine what's under there?
We're gonna have them look at it.
They're gonna look, okay.
They'll, they'll look at and see.
They will?
They will tell, yeah. Engineering and Public Works will figure this out. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we got, uh, number six, uh, Mr. Simpson. That asked to put this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, uh, asked by a couple of aldermen to respond to some complaints that they had received regarding, uh, some inquiries from concerned citizen groups. And, um, I prepared a response or a statement to the concerns they raised. Uh, within the City of Long Beach are groups of concerned citizens, some who have organized to monitor and promote growth and economic development, while at the same time to improve, preserve, and protect the natural beauty and friendly city environment, uh, Long Beach enjoys. The mission statement of one such organization states that it seeks to accomplish these goals through, quote, "collaboration with local governments," close quote. The mayor and Board of Aldermen encourage and indeed welcome participation in exchange of information and concerns with the citizens of Long Beach. Recently, members of the Board of Aldermen received information from a neighboring city official and developers claiming concerned citizen groups from Long Beach had made requests for production of information, and based upon the requests, understood the group was either created or at a minimum empowered and authorized to make such inquiries and requests for information by the governing authority of the city. As an informed public is good for the community, however, organized groups or individuals acting alone may not represent, infer, or allow the appearance that they are acting with the permission or authority or at the direction of the governing board of the city. Miscommunication often leads to misunderstanding. Therefore, the mayor and board respectfully ask all citizens to clearly and unambiguously identify themselves, their organization, and the purpose for which they may be making inquiries regarding development and other potential projects within the city. Developers, businesses, and individuals may voluntarily provide such information and access to documents as they choose, but may not be led to believe they are under an obligation to respond to a request unless it is from a Long Beach city official. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. All right. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Department Business, Mayor's, Mayor's Office, the first winged thing I wanna do. What, you wanna? Am I on you?
I can't hear you good.
Can you lend Mikey one of your hearing aids?
My hearing aids? You only getting one.
I'm good.
The broken one.
They said they could hear me earlier.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, uh, I want to, uh, place on the next agenda the tri-party agreement and encourage all the aldermen to be here to re, to revisit this. Uh, I'll ask for it in a minute. Uh, don't agree with what's happened here tonight. I feel like I was ambushed and trapped, and I intend to find out who suggested that, Pete. Uh, so I need a motion and second to put this back on.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, we have personnel, fire department, education pay. We have two. Uh, motion and second discussion?
Motion.
Same move.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have, uh, city clerk financing for police cars. Motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
All right, discussion.
Chief, you good with this?
So, just...
I think the question is, are we good with this?
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Originally, the, the board approved to, um, finance three vehicles. These two vehicles were ready and on a lot, and the chief went and got them. The other vehicle has been ordered. It hasn't started production yet, so it'll be a couple of months. So the bank recommended we go ahead... So the bank recommended we go ahead and do the financing for these two, and then y'all will have to do one more in a few months when the, uh, the recreation truck comes in. But this is the one that won the bid when we put it up.
All right, and this was, something was done while I was out?
During the budget process.
During the budget.
I can't hear you.
Two are the police department, one is Bob Paul's.
Okay.
But this is only for your two cars.
Nothing, this has nothing to do with Bob Paul's vehicle then?
It's not here yet.
Not yet.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? What was the cost of this, the two vehicles?
Eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Then they have to be outfitted. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have revenue expense report. Motion and second discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Fire Department Chief, you got anything? Okay, uh, Police Department Chief, you have anything?
Sir, I'm good.
Y'all just waving me off. Y'all acting like Harry over here.
Harry didn't even know you were talking to him.
Yeah. Uh, next we have Engineering, uh, Change Order J.E. Borries Southeast Shoreline Bulkhead. A motion and second for discussion?
Some move.
Second.
We got a motion and two seconds. Uh, discussion. Y'all have any questions?
David, this is what you told us was coming, correct?
Right.
We're doing the-
A test pile program for all the future phases, but do it while we're under contract with our, our current contract. Yes, sir.
Good. So we're moving forward.
Sure.
Not till we vote to do this.
Okay, let's vote.
Uh, and, and the, what's the total cost?
I, I will say that all I was able to get from the contractor right now is for the first two test piles. We still have five more that we would recommend. This is thirty, nope, six, sixty-nine thousand, thirty-five basically, thirty-five thousand per pile, per test pile. He's, it really, part of this is, it's, it's significantly more than what we paid in, for his per bid price, but this is out of the scope area, so he's having to go do extra work beyond just driving a pile. He's having to go do extra work that was never part of his bid price.
Let me ask you a two-part question. If we went out to advertise for this for bid, how long would it take to get it back?
Oh, if we started right now, yes, sir, two, two months.
Two months?
Yes, sir.
Anticipated time of delivery for pilings?
If, if we started from scratch and got a new contractor, six months to a year?
Right. If we don't do this?
Yeah, if we don't do this, we're, we're a year from now to start. Yes, sir.
But if we do this right now at a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars a piling?
Yeah.
A sheet piling?
The, the contractor expresses that he thinks that, and, and as y'all, that those of you that were present at the meeting, Gulf Coast Prestress, you know, stated that they were ready to, to start production on these piles ASAP, so-
What's the curing time on that and how long?
It's still twenty-eight days cure time.
And they could, it's deliverable after twenty-eight days. Uh, when can our contractor start?
I, I would think that if we approve this tonight within, you know, by mid to late December, he will be getting started on the first test piles.
I want everybody to understand why we're doing this.
And his business has had in the long run on everything.
I, I have a question.
Still having to push hard with Gulf Coast Prestress to get that, but that's what we're talking about.
Prestress, Prestress had told us that they would deliver these within a reasonable timeframe. And we asked what was a reasonable timeframe, and they said if we could, we get the approval, they're looking at December.
Yes, sir.
I, I just have a question, and my knowledge of this test piling stuff is very limited. Once we pay, I'm just curious, once we pay thirty-five thousand dollars for these, do we get to reuse them in the bill process?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This, this pile, it is, we're calling it a test pile, but it actually serves as a production pile also.
We're not gonna pull it up and use it for-
Yeah, I was wondering what happens to that.
That's right. It stays there and will be incorporated into the overall project.
You can't buy it for a hundred dollars and use it as a bridge crossing at your house.
At the hunting camp.
We can build you a office on it.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood why we're doing this in an effort to repair, repair our harbor, that everybody says we're not doing anything to do. We at the mercy of businesses and contractors, and we've, we're moving forward, trying to get, uh, I think where we left off with FEMA and what we did with our appeal, uh, we've, I think we've included our city council to help us get these funds that we deserve from FEMA to rebuild our harbor. Without that, we don't have the money to rebuild the harbor, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Change Order for DNA Underground Troutman Basin Pump Station. Uh, David, uh, a motion and second?
Motion.
Uh, discussion. Uh, David, you want to go ahead and explain to them what this is so we can-
I will, yes, sir. For, for, for many years, we've, we've designed pump stations for the city in, in a certain way, and recently the city has discovered, and, and Public Works has discovered that they would really prefer that we had installed guide rails in our pump stations that will really assist them with maintenance. Uh, that was not included, I'm, I'm, when I say recently, I mean in the last month or two. That was, so that was not included in the design of this project, because that's just not been the standard city process. So this is kind of optional. We don't have to have it, but I, I think it would be better for the city to have it.
All right, hearing this, uh, we have any more discussion? All those in favor, a motion and second?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh. Hmm?
It's okay.
Well, it carried. I couldn't, any, any opposed? All y'all voted for it.
There you go.
Saving time, Bernie. Now I lost it.
Go on.
All right, now we've got, uh, Change Order bottom to top, North Jeff Davis Avenue Extension. Uh, motion and second for discussion?
Some move.
Second.
Uh, this is ratifying what we, uh, had approved
Right.
through an informal action to approve this change order that allows modifications. This, this allowed us to keep the contractor there to move forward, and we got a better price while they were already there doing the job. And what they did was took the curb and out onto Old Pass Road and entered into the Qualls property. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. Do we have, uh, any more discussion?
This is all grant money.
Hmm?
Grant money. This comes through the grant.
Your money, you donate for your salary.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. Now, this is grant, and it's, uh-
We'll make sure everybody knew that.
Right, so, yeah, it's, it's not costing us.
I will be glad to donate a little bit, though.
Okay.
All right.
All right, all those, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have the, uh, number, uh, eleven, Section eleven-six D. And we, I had, uh- I'll entertain a motion and second and table this to the next meeting.
Second.
You got a motion and two seconds. Any discussion?
Discussion. Just by my, just looking for some clarity, by, by tabling it, we don't run out of time on these bids or anything like that. They're not time sensitive?
No.
That's correct. We have ninety days. The bids are good for ninety days.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're not, we're not losing, missing out on the time.
We can't do that. While we're trying to, yeah, while we're trying to catch up and get ahead with these other test piles, we don't want to jeopardize, jeopardize that.
I'm good.
All right, uh-
Aye.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bernie?
No.
Okay. All right, next we have, uh, Public Works.
We're good, thank you.
You all right? All right. Uh, Recreation, Bob is not here tonight, so I'm assuming we're right there. Uh, shouldn't do that, but I did. Uh, Building Office, Mike?
Sir, I'm good.
Good. Good deal. Uh, Municipal Courts?
Out of town.
Out of town vacation, that's correct. Uh, Harbor? Okay. Uh, and Community Affairs, Courtney, today is her birthday.
Birthday, yeah.
She turned a quarter of a century old.
Lordy mercy.
She's twenty-five and out doing her celebration with family, so y'all see her.
She's older than that.
If y'all don't see her tonight, tell her happy birth, happy belated birthday tomorrow, so. Uh, next, Derelict Properties, we have none. Do we have a, a report from the city attorney?
No, sir.
Uh, I'd like to go in exec, executive session, uh, to discuss possible legal action.
All right.
And I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.